Crystal.
So it doesn't matter, it's all.
We will now call the September eighth, two thousand twenty twenty five.
Nope.
Yale Medicine East School Board meeting.
What? Yep. It had no sound.
That's all you had it said?
You could plug the phone into it. Yeah, and even if you don't have to, that doesn't, this one, that one doesn't matter. Yeah, it's working out, but like, let's see.
So now it's good?
Yes.
Should you can hear?
All right, we will pick up and resume the meeting. Looking for an approval of agenda, I recommend one change to the agenda and moving up item nine point two, the item to ratify the sale of the general obligation bonds. I think we have a swift guest from quite a distance. We have to move that up so that get that done a little earlier so they can have a chance to head back sooner. That's it.
Motion to approve the agenda as modified.
Motion to approve?
A second?
A second. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. All right, care is, all right. Sonya, would you read the, my mission statement, please?
Sure can. Our mission is to provide a caring environment of high expectations that prepares every student for a successful future and instills the value of learning.
Thank you, Sonya. All right, next is the public address to the Board of Education. Would you like to address?
I'd like to address.
Oh, come on up.
Oh, I think everybody should be able to hear me from here.
Oh, this is for them.
Yeah, this is, this is for the cameras. So we'll give you three or four minutes pause, so.
Okay, okay, no problem. I'm a resident of Clarkfield over there and the old school district owns that swimming pool over there. And I was wondering if you were aware of what the latest improvements that that city wants to do to the swimming pool? Anybody here know anything about it? Have they notified you what they're gonna do next?
They have not.
They have. You guys own it, they don't. And for some reason or another, I can't seem to get it through their heads over there. That you guys own this pool and if they want to make improvements to it, they should come and ask you first. It'd be no different than me going up to your place and saying, hey, I'm gonna add on to your garage. And I'm gonna live there, you know? And you couldn't say nothing, you know? You own it. So the latest thing that the, that they're gonna do over there, they want to redo the office area, the floor, the shower area, the locker room, and as well as the doorway going up to there. And the city wants, the city's gonna pay for this. But I think they should still have to ask permission from you guys first because they don't own it. They just seem to go ahead and do whatever they want first. I just wanted you to be aware of this, that's all.
Okay, all right, thank you, Paul. Next is the consent agenda, the approval of the meeting minutes from October thirteenth, the approval of payment of claims, the approval of the finance report, the approval of the enrollment report, and then the acknowledgement of the requests.
I will motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
I will second.
Motion and a second, is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no? Care is. All right, this is where we move up item nine point two to discuss the ratifying the sale of the serious twenty five, twenty twenty five general obligations school building bonds. Welcome.
Good evening and thank you. And thank you for modifying the agenda, as somebody that was dodging deer and deer hunters on the way out here. I appreciate you doing that, allowing me to get home a little bit earlier this evening, so thank you. My name is Bill Manazi, I'm a director with PTMA, relatively new to the team. I know that this board is familiar with Steve Pumper and Michael Hart, so I do appreciate the chance to address you tonight on some really, really good news that you will see. So there are a number of enclosures in your school board agenda. I'm primarily going to reference the sale summary, which looks like this. Just a brief summary that I'd like to go over with you tonight. So going to the first page in the, in the summary, just to really set the table for why I'm here. So the purpose of the bond, obviously as everybody knows, was the acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities, including but not limited to construction of a new elementary school and secondary school facility attached to the existing gymnasium facility with secure entrances, outdoor site and athletic improvements, and new spaces for technical, agricultural, and fine arts education. So a number of projects on behalf of your students and your community. The mechanism was a general obligation school building bond, GO bond for short. Thank you for forming that up, I'm just on, on the second page of the summary. And then the authority was the election that was held on August twelfth, twenty twenty five, undoubtedly a night where it was much warmer than it is this evening. The bid summary, so this is really the meat and potatoes of, of the summary document. We did receive, we conducted a bid last Wednesday, November fifth, and we received three bids. Three is the minimum that we like to see, typically we like to see a few more bids than that, but not surprising, it's a thirty year bond and typically there are fewer bonds related to, to that thirty year timeframe. The good news is the, the bid that we did receive, the winning bid from Robert W. Baird, underwriter out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, was an exceptional bid. You can see that the true interest cost was four point one three eight four percent, which is truly an exceptional bid, we were very, very excited to see that. The other bids were from Wells Fargo and Morgan Stanley. And you can see that the cover bid, we refer to the second bid from Wells Fargo as the cover bid. On the bottom there, the interest savings between the winning bid from Robert W. Baird and the cover bid from Wells Fargo, the difference between those two in terms of interest costs is over a million dollars over the life of the bond. So an exceptional, exceptional result last Wednesday. Getting down to the sale summary on the next page and some, some details to share with you. I'd like to really focus that, so the, the way the columns read, so the preliminary from October of twenty twenty five and then the final is, is the result of the sale last Wednesday. The true interest cost that we use in our finance plan, you can see in the preliminary in October twenty twenty five, was four point nine eight percent. And within that, we did build a small cushion from some interest rate fluctuation of about point three percent within that four point nine eight. But the actual true interest cost is four point one two percent, so a difference of point eight six percent. And you can see the result of that, really the most important role is the total debt service, right? So in the finance plan, we were using seventy four million, one hundred and seventy two thousand, three hundred and thirty five dollars. The final number is sixty seven million, two hundred and six thousand, four hundred and eighty two dollars, which translates to almost seven million in interest savings over the life of the bond. So really, if I'm repeating myself that this is an exceptional result, I have a relatively short timeframe here, but I am really excited to be here and share this news with me tonight.
That's very exciting, so I appreciate you sharing that, Wes.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. The next page is the bond structure, a graph of the, the bond structure. And really why do we include this here, there are two important items to note. There's a, there's a whole lot going on here in a thirty year bond, but one, we show this graph to, show that it matches the structure that we discussed in September regarding the thirty year bond term. And then the tax impact is in line with what the community was told during the bond process, right? So you can see the dark blue is the twenty twenty five bond, which is presented to you this evening, and then the lighter blue is the twenty twenty seven bonds that'll be here in a few years. And then getting towards the end here, going to the sources and uses page. Out of full transparency, our firm PTMA, we, we like to show the list of professionals you're paying as part of the process, and this is really shown on the sources and uses. So under uses, you can see the underwriters discount, that's Robert W. Baird out of Milwaukee, as I mentioned. And then the other professional services for PMA Securities, also for Bond Counsel. Moody's was our rating agent, I'll get to that here on the next page as well. So just wanted to make sure that we showed that from a transparency standpoint. And then lastly, I wanted to touch on a bond rating on the next page. So the district was involved in a, in a bond rating with Moody's Credit Rating Agency and, and I wanted to show a few highlights from, from the rating report. So first of all, the district was awarded an A1 rating, which is a very strong rating assigned to the school district. And really three highlights from the ratings report. So highlight one and three are really related to community information and voter information, which you can see there were certainly highlights. But the, the highlight I really want to focus in on is, is highlight two, which shows that available fund balances are strong, just over thirty one percent to revenue at the close of last fiscal year, so two thousand twenty four year. And positive operations are projected for fiscal two thousand twenty five and budgeted for fiscal two thousand twenty six. And this really shows the strong fiscal management that the district has shown and credit to district administration and to the board for their management in this area. Certainly the A1 rating helped you achieve the interest result that, that you did in the bid here. So congratulations on that as well. And then lastly, from a calendar standpoint, so here we are sitting here on November tenth, where the board considers the ratifying resolution. But this is obviously not the first date, there are a number of dates that have led up to this. As I mentioned, last week on November fifth was the bond sale. And then moving forward on December second, the money will be available in the account for, for the project. So there'll be forty million, four hundred thousand in the account as of December second, when the bond closes. And then lastly, next steps, the, as I mentioned, the funds will be available to draw as the project expenditures come due. Proceeds will be invested so the funds are available based on the construction draw schedule. So Steve Pumper from our office does the investment side of things and, and he will be handling the, the district's investment so the funds are available. Interest earnings can be used to enhance the project budget, as you would imagine. And then we will be available to help monitor compliance with IRS arbitrage or rebate regulations as well. So just a, a few points on next steps. So overall, summary of the bid process, we are very, very excited to receive the three bids and one exceptional one and, and excited to recommend this, and I do for approval.
Thank you, appreciate that. Any questions for Bill? No, it's exciting, I'm glad to see that, I once terribly, of course, everybody would be happy to see that, so. Appreciate that, that news.
For viewership too, we will issue the second bond at a later date. So the remainder of it, but we didn't borrow it all upfront, so.
So the next order of business then would be to ratify the bond resolution to accept the bids that we received.
Yes, motion to approve that, that's motion.
You need a motion from us to approve?
Yes.
I make that motion to approve.
A second.
Motion and a second to approve the bond results? During the discussion. Hearing none, all signify by saying aye. Oh, it's roll call.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Back up, we'll do a roll call vote against the resolution. Let's start with Director Richter.
Abby Richter, yes.
Matt Semple, yes.
Jeremy LeBlanc, yes.
Sonya Peterson, yes.
Laurel Christensen, yes.
Amanda Lisi, yes.
Ron Luther, yes.
Very good, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay safe on your way home.
All right, next we'll move on to reports, we'll start with Burt Rainey Elementary Report from Principal Hinton.
It's fun to follow that.
Yes.
All right, well, I'm gonna jump right into mine. First of all, historically for a number of years, we have had Ross submerge in to assist with a music residency at Burt Rainey. And he again was with us October twentieth through the twenty fourth. He worked with our fifth grade students to build and learn to play a one string dulcimer. He also gave an introductory dulcimer lesson to our first through fourth graders during the music classes. And I just wanna note that the funding for this was made possible in part by the voters of Minnesota through a grant from the Southwest Minnesota Arts Council. And I'm sure some of you probably remember your own children coming through with their dulcimers that then get sent home at a later date, so.
Still love them.
Yep. Yes. Last week was a really busy week at Burt Rainey. On Wednesday, we had Dr. Dan Minham come in and do a full day of indigenous games at Burt Rainey. He previously was at the middle school, high school on Tuesday. And a couple of things that he worked on, first of all, all students in grades two through five were able to attend the lesson with him. And it was, it was really enjoyable to watch, with just some things they worked on like how to row a canoe and a lot of skills that focused on traditional lacrosse. So he was, he was amazing. All staff and students were like, can you please come back again? So we certainly enjoyed having him in the building for that day. Parent teacher conferences were held last Thursday and you may recall that we did switch the format this year to see, give it a one year shot and see how it went. We always track our percentages, so we're just still finishing that up. We had a few conferences still actually happening this week. And so I, for the next board meeting, I'll have our percentage, we can kind of compare that to last year. Staff development, I, that was on Friday, and I linked that to number four. Also wanted to give you an update on our tag programming, which is Talented and Gifted. That will be starting in mid-November with, I'm sure many of you remember Trish Jessen, former teacher at Burt Rainey. She will continue to head that up. And so we are in the process of getting that organized for students in grades three, four, and five. We also are celebrating Native American Heritage Month, which I believe, I'm not sure, Mr. Schneider, if that got linked online or if that's linked on Mrs. Hinz's?
I think it is.
Okay, perfect, so you can take a look at those activities that our liaisons put together for the district for this week. Next week, we will be celebrating American Education Week, and I also linked that flyer. And if you happen to be interested in being a guest reader at Burt Rainey on Thursday, let me know. And I can let you know what grades and times are available in case you really would love to come in and read a book to one of our classes, we'd love to have you.
And that's Thursday of next week?
Correct, Thursday of next week. That's it, any questions for me?
Have we had any feedback at the elementary level about the change in how we do conferences, just the one night with the early?
I would say not yet, only because Thursday was such a full day and Friday was packed that there really wasn't a lot of time to even talk about how it went. I haven't gotten feedback either way, so.
What's different this year, Mrs. Hinz?
So, you know, historically, we've done the two Thurs, or two, two nights. A lot of times it's Thursday, Thursday or Thursday, Tuesday. But teachers would work a full day and then we'd do conferences three forty to seven forty. This year, we dismissed at one o'clock with parent teacher conferences starting at one forty.
Oh, okay.
So conferences ran from one forty to seven forty. So their contract time was still one forty to three forty, but then the conference credit was three forty to seven forty. So basically made a longer day instead of two nights.
And you haven't really heard much feedback from teachers or?
I have not, no, have not yet. But I do anticipate we will, we had a staff meeting today, but we just didn't have time to even talk about it, so.
Other questions?
Hearing none, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Stacy is unable to attention, her report is attached there, I did quickly breeze through it. I can tell you, enhance ACT, which Leah can probably speak more to than me. But it's just three scores they're combining and it'll be easier to get a super score, correct?
So what's different is the.
Science is.
Science is optional, but we're choosing to opt in because it's the first year, you never know if they're gonna have it or not. So the junior ACT test, the English test is half the questions now. So you will get them all done, but they're weighted heavier. And then your comp score is from English reading and math. And the science is there, it's not weighted into your comp. But students who are going into those sort of fields, we didn't want to leave it out in picking students, so we went with it this year. And as always, we don't do the writing.
And do you want to explain what a super score is?
A super score is when you take the test over and they take the best of all of your scores to get the best comp, the best of everything.
And then they make the highest composite score?
Correct, yeah, correct, yep.
All right, thank you. Anything else about? All right, we're moving on to a district report from Super Teller Schnitt.
Okay. I've, I gave you a handout on that NSBA conference that's coming up in January. Hoping all of you can attend right now, we have you all, except for one, in, in there. I will go to the Grand Paulus City Council meeting, we're going to, there will be a hearing on the vacation of the right of ways that run through the middle of our property and that have existed there for a while. So I'm sure the majority of the questions will be updated on the building project, so. Which, speaking of that, you folks have been in on the design meetings. We've talked a little bit about the exterior, getting closer and closer to an idea of what it looks like. So the biggest rush is, and we're, we're going to keep track, but what they're really trying to figure out now is the outer shell of it, what it will look like so we can get steel order. All right, that's where we're at, we're in that design phase of that. So really, that's the biggest thing, that's what they're spending the majority of their time on. So, just so you have an idea. But going through all that, this week we're supposed to be getting soil borings done. So we'll get kind of final last decision on where the building can go, so. They are planning for a second round of staff meetings where they come and meet with all the groups, kind of talk about some of the things. The good thing is, we will be back from our visit to Sibley East and New Home. And Sibley will get to see two schools. And then at New Home, we'll also get to see their high school there. So both window design projects, so. Drivers' education agreement, I did enter into an agreement with Dylan Lindstrom. He'll perform five years of service for us, paying for his training. So he can't begin that five years until the training's done. So he'll start working on that next semester. He should really be able to, with a reasonable amount of effort, get all the way done with it next semester. So it's not that tall of a task. Now, Shelte is currently providing behind the wheels and she's prior, training, she's prioritizing our oldest kiddos. And trying to get through that. She will work through, right now through March is what we've got her kind of obligated to. But she's willing to work with us a little bit longer if needed, so we'll continue to monitor that. So we'll continue to monitor that. Not very often businesses kick you off of their service, but our higher image did kick us off their service, they were too small of a company, that they don't want our business, I guess, as their business model. So Tara and I will have to figure out another one. We have kind of identified one that's very similar to what we have. We haven't had a chance to completely vet it. When I say similar, really what we're after is if they can perform that service for approximately the same cost, we're gonna take it, so. We're, unfortunately, we're not gonna have time to review contracts and everything, because we gotta go. So I'll do that, and I'll sign that contract. It's not like we have to pay six thousand dollars upfront. It's cost based upon per occurrence, so. And if you can recall, we pay for volunteer background checks ourselves, so. Before and after-school task force, we'll meet tomorrow night at five PM to start talking about what, any changes we wanna make. But the big thing that I want to do is, we need some lead time if we're gonna offer something different in the summer. And so I'd like to kinda get that fleshed out in the next month or so, because we need to back that up so we can do some things with summer food service program too, so. Negotiations, we have a meeting this Thursday, I realize in my weekly update, I put five thirty, but it's actually at six, because we'll be coming back from New Home. So we'll have a pre-meeting before that, so watch your emails. So we, I did present the district's proposals, but we haven't made significant progress, so. We'll get there. I have attached the Taylor PR proposal, I know we've talked about that. Unless you folks feel differently, I'd like to run that through the finance committee, just so we can talk about it in detail. I don't think we have to rush into it, but I would like some feedback on what you folks have heard in terms of communication, was that valuable? Would they, would our patrons support that? Because it does cost money, so it's not for you. Railing update, so I'm hoping, battering back and forth, that November eighteenth and nineteenth, we can have that railing put in for our upper area on both sides. It may, if things run over, we may, I think we have a home event on the twentieth, so we may have to close something off. My fear is they ordered it, and just like everything else, I'm not real confident all the parts are here. All right, so we'll see how.
I'm a little confused, what are we talking about, the mistletoe, the upper, the?
Upper bleachers-
Okay.
In the nineteen eighty gym are going to get railings.
For the top part, okay.
Yeah, above, I think, wasn't the bid twenty thousand dollars?
Oh, nineteen something, I must've missed that, okay.
Yeah, we approved that back when we approved the whole market cap along with that. And I know the question is, and this is what we debated, and I don't wanna put words in the building ground committee's mouth, but that's a lot of novelty issue, putting that railing, even though we know those bleachers are eventually coming out of there, protects us, so.
Yep, well, and can we take the railings with us ever? Or it's a kind of a?
I would guess not, it's twenty thousand dollars walking out the door. Not sure how much they'll recycle for, though, maybe we'll get something on.
It's more of a short-term insurance, it would be something. I thought from the committee was that we have one incident, twenty thousand's gonna be cheap.
You bet, and I agree with that. Thank you, I'm sorry.
It can happen fast enough.
Remember all that.
Yeah, and so there will, you know how that first step is a super step?
Oh, yeah, it's really hard to resolve.
This should resolve that. It doesn't mean there's not a trip hazard associated with that smaller step, but.
But still, be a railing there to help you get up, is that right?
And a step.
And a smaller step.
And another step, okay. Yeah, no, I agree, that is a very hard step.
All right, anything further, any questions for Superintendent Schneider?
I have one more, sorry.
Okay.
The behind the wheel, so Mel is going to do it until March, and then Mr. Dan will take over for the rest, and then-
Correct.
So Mel will not be available after March?
We will see. She is flexible, she wants to know in March what our intent is for June. Right now, I've kinda committed the classroom portion in June, because we don't know that we'll have an opportunity to offer it back in the school day again based upon staffing and qualification. So we'll, this summer, we're going to advertise in our community ed bulletin that we will have a regular summer progress day with our intent of probably having Mel teach that classroom portion.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And Mel is not really looking for extra draft, that's, so we're trying to find the sweet spot, if you recall, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Rich. Move on to committee reports. First committee is the Activities Committee, had a meeting on October twenty-second.
That is us.
Well, let me see if I can get to that. Anybody else wanna start it? I lost, I need to get to it.
We kinda started with talking about our new cheer team that we've just started this fall, and those involved, had some talks around, right now, everyone is volunteer, volunteer coaches, and maybe needing to find out more about what was gonna happen going forward, which I don't think we really got anywhere with that yet at that point, but just kinda talking about it. We're certainly, we're hoping we can still continue that program. We heard a lot of great feedback from parents, from community, like just fun to have that piece of it back in football. And right now, they were currently only doing football, so we talked about, well, you know, what could that look like in the future? So that was kinda the update on that.
Yep, and then we did talk about the volleyball uniforms, and how MSH did drop, drop the guidelines after everything was kinda set and done. Am I correct in that, Rich?
Yeah, we received a penalty, I think only for one game, maybe it happened more than once, but. So they weren't inconsistently enforcing it, so.
Yes.
Did they drop them all together, or they just delayed the implementation?
I think it's dropped for now.
Yeah, I think the implementation is going to be next.
Yeah, I think so, but just due to the burdens to, you know, the districts financially, so. I wouldn't anticipate that it's gonna go away, but in the meantime, yeah.
We won't resolve it.
Yes, it will be compliant.
Compliance for it, with the contrasting numbers on the uniforms and things like that. What else did we talk about, NFHS, the video problems? I don't know if we got anywhere with that.
Not really, just seeming to be less issues with it, other than like the score at the football game, but, yeah, that was a, that was what we talked about there.
We talked about numbers for the fall, and then we talked about numbers about for spring, or the winter, winter sports, I guess it is.
What they had at that point, because they were most recent.
Right, because some winter sports started today, is that right? And then some start next, boys' basketball starts next Monday, girls' basketball starts today, adversity level.
Yeah, and Dan started on the twentieth of October.
So we just talked about numbers, I'm not sure if there's updated numbers out yet or not.
I did not update them.
Okay. What else did we talk about? We did, we did talk about a little bit about mentoring some new coaches when they come in, how we could go about doing that, and asked him what he was, what his thoughts were on that. Let me just hear the numbers, as of two weeks ago. And then, what else? Lego League, talked a little bit about that. Anything else you guys can think of?
Not really.
Let's go there, I think.
Any questions for the Activities Committee? Thank you, very nice. We'll move on to the negotiations, Richard alluded to the negotiations update in his report. Kind of where we're sitting right now, and Thursday we have another meeting scheduled. Continue to go through our proposals, so you know, conversations have been positive to this point, so let's continue moving forward in that fashion. Any questions on negotiations? Next is the Building and Grounds Committee. We met on November fifth, and talked about a few things. First thing we talked about was just, it was just more of a conversation of ideas of the new elementary school. If we would continue with the Burt Rainey Elementary name, or if we would move it to YME, the Ole Miss East Elementary, or just what general thoughts are on that. We didn't have any, I don't know that we came to consensus, and I don't know that we, certainly don't have any decisions made, we just started the conversation, so. Moving forward, maybe that's something we can all, have to think about a little, little deeper in what we wanna do there. We also talked about council, and the meeting that Richard will be going to on the seventeenth, starting regarding the ordinances to vacate the roadways that are underneath the school currently, and fixing those property issues. Spencer Quam and Steve Blum are working on how we can write up those legal descriptions. I know they're having a little bit of a difficult time trying to manage that, but we'll get through that. There was also a triangular piece on the plat, if you look at the GIS map, where the tennis court, the track is, there's that weird triangle piece in there, that's actually a GIS error, that is not, the school doesn't own that piece, it showed that the city owned that piece. So the county's gonna work on getting that GIS error cleaned up, so that is actually theirs, so that's not really a non-issue for us now. Richard gave an update on the zoning meeting that, was that with Jim?
Yes.
Yeah, so on a placement of, so there's some buildings by the track, that's, those crowd sheds about, some zoning questions about what to be there, and then also placement of the maintenance building that's being proposed for along like the CC road there. So we came up with a few more questions for Jim on that, Preston, to maybe look at a little further.
We discussed the engineering, the ventilation system for the new school. One of the big topics would be where the chiller unit would go for the gymnasium, HVAC. We're proposing that maybe that they would look at using part of the upper mezzanine on the north side, which would be like where the stairwell goes down to the hallway. But we would lose seating up there if we did that. So I will say that's not a popular idea amongst the grounds committee, so. We'll continue to look at other options there, and we'll see what Preston can, can work with our HVAC designers to maybe come up with a solution that works, that's acceptable.
How much seating would it be?
I think Jeff Pardington, our maintenance director, said that would be approximately, he doesn't know for sure, he's guessing, but approximately thirty feet, so it'd take about a third of that seating up there on the north side. So it's considerable.
Yeah.
And then would that, my concern was, would that create then a sight distance hazard? If you're sitting along that area, can you see that side of the gym? So things to work through, but I guess that wasn't the, the consensus was that we'd prefer that that not happen. Like to see a different resolution. But we'll continue working through those, what we call these expected discussions to happen during design, especially retrofitting older buildings. There was, we talked about the maintenance building itself, where would that fall into the building budget overall? There was some concerns on that, Preston did confirm that that would come out of the construction contingency area as far as the cost to relocate and build a new maintenance building facility. Asbestos abatement contracts, Richard's going to sign an asbestos abatement contract, IEA. IEA is our company that's been doing asbestos abatement for us for years. So we're gonna begin to start identifying the areas and working through those areas that we need discussion in nineteen thirty building, so we can work towards demo, and then also safety building as well. That's not, the contract you signed, Richard, was that for just the first phase?
Yep, well, no, it's for all testing, over all of the schools, so.
The whole school, okay.
So the testing will be completely done, that can be done. And I'm guessing during demo, there'll be spot testing.
And who knows where that'll show up, I guess, if you remember when we did the auditorium, the only place that they found it was in the adhesive that held the titles of the floor. You didn't find it anywhere else, remember, so it could be anywhere, we'll wait to see. We discussed the updating, upcoming building meetings going through, and that was, we discussed the trip that we're gonna take to the schools here this week, so. Other than that, there was, anything else that I might have missed there? Questions?
Next is the Curriculum and Advisory Council, met on October twenty-second.
So this is actually part of one of our policies for the, I don't remember which one, but this is required, council or committee that we have, and you can see the minutes there. This may play a bigger role as we get more active with our World's Best Workforce, or what is it, Comprehensive Achievement and Career Readiness Report, I believe. So this committee is probably going to play a bigger role in some of that as we go forward, so. Reviewed a few of the curriculum that we've added there, and given updates, so.
Questions on that?
It was a virtual meeting, so.
All right, here are no questions, all right, next. Out of eight point five, the Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness, formerly known as World's Best Workforce presentation, Leah, I believe you're here to give it to us?
Yeah, I figured she has slides.
All right, welcome.
Thanks.
So I'll start off a little bit, so I'm on page two here, just to give you an update. Remember during the, I don't know why it's not catching up, but it's not right now? So we're on page two in your quick agenda. I know how I get that to catch up.
It just naturally lights, doesn't it?
It gets just slower.
It's really light, so maybe I'll stop more.
More proof of why our referendum's necessary.
There. All right, so Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness, so this annual meeting kinda pulls together all of our goals from a multitude of areas. So you'll hear from Leah tonight, which the achievement integration, and quite a bit of what she does is in, I would call it like if we use the analogy of a basketball game, it's the fourth quarter. High school's the fourth quarter, and that's what most people pay attention to. Just like when you watch any sporting event, that's where the score lots of time is kept. But if you've coached any, you know in the first, second, and third quarters is pretty important too, getting off to a good start, so. There's actually five goals in this that tie indirectly to our mission and vision. So our mission and vision should support these five areas. So these five areas now are, all children ready for school, all racial and economic achievement, gaps between students are closed, all students ready for career in college, all students graduate from high school, and all students are prepared to be lifelong learners. That last one's a new one, and writing a goal for that is kinda challenging. What does that look like? So we'll talk a little bit about that when we get to that slide. Old one that dropped off is, they put a lot of onus on the third grade reading, that's no longer in there as one separate standalone. All right, I think Lisa, you wanna hop up here and talk about all children? All right, I think Lisa, you want to hop up here and talk about all children ready for school?
So, we had actually hoped this year that the statewide kindergarten assessment would be ready to go, but that is being put out by M D E and that is now underway. And if you take a look at our score, so right now what that says is that seventy-five percent of the children entering kindergarten this fall would be able to complete eighty percent or more of skills as noted on that readiness document. And I think I've talked about this in the years prior. It really is comparing apples to oranges because number one, we get students that didn't do preschool with us, didn't do Head Start. And so, it's, to me, this is, are we preparing our children to go to kindergarten? And we really have no control over what everyone else is doing, but we still, we pull the data, and what we do is in May, all preschool teachers in Head Start who anticipate they have children that are going to kindergarten in the fall, they complete this kindergarten readiness document. Then over the summer, of course, we get new students, some show up that first week of school. So, now, if you go back, locally, they're assessed in May. Then in September, if someone shows up with a new kindergarten student, our title staff would do the assessment with them. So, again, we're really happy with our seventy-five percent, but it's also difficult to, you know, like I went through and I can tell how many of our kids attended preschool here. But then you get into the variables of, well, is Head Start our preschool? Not really, but they do get our support. Then you have kids that maybe only came for a quarter, maybe the last quarter of the year, we still assess them. So, I think the state is making a good choice. They will have a statewide entering kindergarten assessment, so it will not matter where they're coming from, the data would be the same. Because right now, most schools, we all created our own one, and so there's no comparing, if you have a child and they go to Minnioda, you could not compare our assessment to theirs. So, we are looking forward to, hopefully that will be ready by the spring, but right now it is definitely on hold. Any questions for me on that? The other thing that it doesn't take into effect is special ed numbers, because of course, that varies, you know, yearly also. And sometimes it's open enrollment students, sometimes it's not. So, that also can really change our percentages on how many students are ready for kindergarten.
Of those that attended our preschool, what was the readiness rate?
So, I pulled that, I did pull that. So, of the forty students that were assessed at eighty percent or higher, okay, so thirty of the forty, but then of the forty students, twenty-three attended Burberry's preschool last year. So, twenty-three out of forty were incoming, I'm going to call them Burberry kids. So, then I looked at of those twenty-three, how did we do? And so, of the twenty-three, sixteen of those were eighty percent or higher. So, I don't have my calculator in front of me, but sixteen of twenty-three.
Sixty-nine and a half or so.
Oh. So, there's just so many unusual variables. It might be a student that did three years of preschool versus two. In most cases, they're going to score better than someone that maybe had no preschool and didn't have access to any type of home daycare, you know, support, so. Other questions on that? Again, I'm really hoping that assessment is ready. Not that we want to give another assessment, but I really think that one will be notable.
The next one is mine, sorry it's lighting again, but all racial and economic achievement gap between students are closed. So, what I do is, I've got it on the next slide, but I compare, all of them are compared, all these subgroups. So, we have two subgroups that we really look to where we have sufficient students to calculate it. And these scores come from the Minnesota Report Card. American Indian, from year to year, that gap decreased by nine point nine percent. That's a good thing, all right? Hispanic Latino, it decreased by four point nine percent. Now, there's a, when I show the next slide, you'll see there's a lot of nuances with that. Remember, our whole population might have taken, or all of our students may have taken a little dip that caused that to, we just have to watch it. And we know that because of our, our students that were identified as, we are now targeted assistance, right?
Correct.
With our American Indians, so we're working through that with M D E right now. So, free and reduced, unfortunately, that gap increased between the free versus the non-free, so economically disadvantaged and sped versus non-sped, that also increased. So, here's some raw data taken directly from, again, it's lighting, it's, so this is slide eight, it's taken directly from the report card. So, here's some, slide nine, it shows some of the things we're using to try and address that achievement gap, literacy training, et cetera. Those are our strategies we are implementing to try and address that gap. All right, all students are college, are career in college ready by graduation, so Leah, I believe that's your slide.
Yeah, so this is a shared goal, so part of Y M I C, so the elementary and integration collaborative is we work with five other districts, and we have a shared junior goal that we think it makes sense if we're going to collaborate, we should share something together, we set some of our activities. So, that is about students, by when they complete eleventh grade, they earn two or more C T E or college level courses. And our last year was at eighty-five percent, and we are at ninety-six this year. So, that's really great. And really, you're pulling from forty-eight students this year who are seniors, and forty-six out of forty-eight did that, so. I will say, as I've been here longer, I really can notice that students, when they have more of these classes, they really feel more clear in their outcome. It doesn't mean that like you have the final answer, but I think the more experience is it really, is it tells that assignment, they're, they feel clear when they're leaving what they want to do, or not do, that happens as well. The next one was kind of a sub-goal, so we wanted to make sure as we were pulling the data, we didn't just pull from everybody, we wanted to pull from where sometimes we have disparities. So, this one was about the percentage of American Indian Hispanic students enrolled in concurrent or C T E classes will increase. So, we established the baseline, so last year was our new plan, and it will increase every year. So, we actually hit a hundred percent this year, so that was even great too. Our goal was, well, one percent was established, we were established at the bottom, and then our goal's up to seventy-five, and we already hit a hundred. So, all our students had access to this and did this. As you go on to the next slide, it kind of just says all the strategies that we're doing around this. So, in twenty twenty-two, we've talked about this before, we added an Intro to Indigenous Nations class. Students would receive three college credits. We put this on the master schedule so anybody could take the class. And it was a college provided professor, so Adam Saviano came into Y M E and taught this class. I'm not sure which one of the goals it would be, but it would be under one of the goals, that would be transferable to any state school, so that's really positive as well. Last year was his last year doing it, as he took a new job with the state and doesn't always have availability to be here. But what he has offered, which I think was really great, is an independent indigenous studies. So, if students want to dive deeper with his social studies credit, if they want to dive deeper, he comes in. So, he talks to them more independently through email, and then comes in once a week to check in with students, and they earn credit that way as well. As always, we have our concurrent classes, so, which is, I think is a great fit for us. So, students seeing the professor in front of them always works for our students. So, we have our high school academic writing and human diversity classes, which is an English and literature class, which always transfers very well. Calculus, pre-calculus, called algebra, so your math credits are there. And then sociology, which is a very gen ed credit as well. We continue to be a part of the M R B C T C. So, this is, so traditional P S U, you have to have a G P A for it. It's a two point six, or in your upper, it's all these or or ors, but typically we just look at the G P A, two point six typically. This one is more like anyone, and doesn't mean you have a low G P A if you're in these, it just means they're more accessible, they're hands-on courses at the college. So, we have a nine-credit welding certificate that students have been taking, so they can walk in Minnesota West graduation. And we have six enrolled in this semester, I believe. We always do the C D L class, so it's the portion, the classroom portion, so when you're eighteen. And we have four this next year of seniors that will be enrolled in it, you have to be eighteen to do it, and it always saves family around two hundred fifty dollars. So, it's a positive thing, it's not the behind-the-wheel part, but it's the classroom. Twelve-credit healthcare pathways, that's new this year, which is great to talk about it. Students are, as they're looking into healthcare, they're kind of getting started with C N A, C P R, Med term, and then they transition into like a T M A, so you can pass Med as a C N A, and body function and structure, and then they add it into the healthcare. So, we're always kind of, these are really strong programs for us. We have nine, I believe, or eight or nine this year currently in it, and then the power line class last year. And we're still working on how we can get that to continue for us. Another way that students earn credits are the hands-on classes that we have in the building, so our fax department, industrial tech, and our egg department. And then something new that we added this year, I just wanted to add on that are, it falls under our C T E teachers, is a internship program. So, we felt very strongly, as you become a senior, and you really have things lined up for you, we want you to go have hands-on experiences. So, we've started making connections with employers in town. So, last year was our first pilot year, and we had a student shadowing a plumber. We had people on construction sites or carpentry sites, so if they say they want to do construction, they should probably go on the field to see if they actually want to do it. We had a person with an airplane mechanic, he already had that all lined up, so I didn't want to stand in the way to say that he shouldn't be doing that during the school day, and they're receiving credit for it. And then we work with specs and other companies to do welding. So, that's been a really strong program for us. Typically, we have about six students, I think, this year in it, so that's been really helping students feel career in college ready.
Next slide is slide thirteen about all students graduating, and Stacy was going to cover this, but like I said, something came up. Actual, so we do not explain again, we know what was enrolled here last spring and how they came out. The unfortunate thing is M D E digs a little deeper, and sometimes there are kiddos on our roles that we aren't aware of, or that we don't catch. So, the actual in two thousand twenty-four was ninety-five point one, thirty-nine of the forty-two. This year, we're projecting a hundred percent, forty-four of the forty-four, that we had enrolled. We're anticipating that will be that way, but there could be some kiddos that we thought transferred to another school that did not continue. So, they'll get caught. So, that could affect that. Did I say that right, Leah?
Uh huh.
All right, here's some of the strategies that Leah and Stacy have been using, so maybe you want to highlight a few of them?
Yeah, so something that's really unique in the area, I've learned from lots of other counselors, is we have senior meetings or mandatory meetings, is what we call them with families. And I really think it starts the year right. So, parents really know where their senior is at, students know where their credits are, and they really start to make a plan for what's after high school. So, we're kind of the only school that does this in the area, so I think it's something to be proud of. We're constantly, so the parent meetings, the one-to-one in the fall, we actually met with every student who's in credit recovery to make sure that they're still on track to graduate. We don't say sentences like, well, it's up to them, we make sure that we're really standing beside them and making sure that we walk it through to the end to make sure they walk. We do college trips, we do this like other schools, but we do ninth, tenth, or ninth, eleventh, and twelfth grade college trips. I think we're really good at individualizing schedules, so students come in and make requests, and we really make it work for them. I know we're not perfect at it, because it's still a big puzzle piece with the master schedule, but I do think we're pretty good at trying our best to help the student get what they really want to graduate and have that experience. What's new is the work-based learning, so that's the O J T program, the language change. We're always kind of giving students opportunities outside of the school or within the elementary school. I guess the other new one would be with the A L C V sites, just partnering with them, we do have this new credit recovery program called Edgenuity, which is an online program. Those are some of the few, the A C T prep course as well. We really believe in the A C T again, colleges are, are, it used to be A C T optional after COVID, and now it's really coming back. Specifically, two-year schools, they're really requiring the scores. So, students apply with their G P A and they don't send their A C T score, they're waiting for the A C T score. So, it is, and about forty to fifty percent of our students go to here, so it's really important to our students to prep as hard as they can so they can get that score, so they can be admitted to the program. We don't want to stand in the way of that. And so, we do this prep course, and it did increase our scores last year, so it's something to be really proud of, so we want to keep doing it.
So, that worked out well in the course that we funded?
Yes, yes, absolutely, yep.
Approximately, I wish to that cost, do you remember?
Yeah, I think it was around five grand, but that's, that's.
I think that's fine. So, this is the new area that I said we hadn't written a goal for, all students are prepared to be lifelong learners, and what that looks like. So, you're probably going to start to hear a little bit more about what's called the portrait of a graduate. And the intent there is that it's not just a diploma, it's not just a A C T score to measure these kiddos. It's measuring some of the other things that they have that fit under our strategic plans, such as areas of social emotional learning and understanding them, civic engagement. Do they know how to get engaged, and what does that look like for each of them? So, that's the big broad picture of that portrait of a graduate. But here's just some of the areas I thought, well, math and literacy are a big part of that, understanding that. So, we try and do the best we can in those areas, and then obviously Leah's spent quite a bit of time talking about career aspiration. So, just so you know, I didn't forget about this, so this is no longer in there, but I thought you would like to see where we're at and how we would have progressed if we would have continued that. So, with our spring scores, you take a look, last year's third grade scores in reading were an improvement of the previous two years. If you look at it, really, we are still suffering a little bit from the shutdown that we experienced due to COVID. But we're bouncing back nicely, and I think our literacy program has made a lot of with that. Stacy, you want to talk a little bit about some of the strategies we're using?
Absolutely. So, this year, in an effort to improve our literacy instruction, we've put a number of things in place that we have not had before. So, first of all, as you probably remember, you approved our C K L A, which was our new E L A program last year, so this is year two. We are continuing to work hard at implementing that with fidelity, which really means that all K five teachers are using that curriculum, not supplementing, not skipping over, you know, big chunks of the curriculum that we're using it on a very consistent basis. Most of the grade levels are using their Thursday prep time as common meeting time to plan for the following week. As you may recall, we also hired a literacy lead. As you may recall, we also hired a literacy lead for the district and between support from Mrs. Schneider, and we're also now tapping into the service co-op as well. We have already had various onsite collaboration meetings to discuss strengths and weaknesses. And one of the things that we're looking at now in year two is what does CKLA not have? And we knew going in with any curriculum, there's going to be some weak areas. And so coming up in a couple of weeks, we actually were able to secure the regional literacy lead is going to come in and work with our ELA or reading committee to work through a process of really figuring out what is missing in our reading curriculum. And so the other thing that we're going to be working on, even with MDE, is really looking at our Tier One literacy instruction. And really, what Tier One means is what's happening in the Gen Ed classroom. If you are a fourth-grade teacher, what does your ELA classes look like? What components are included? And so both the regional literacy lead and MDE will be assisting us with that. As Mr. Schneider noted earlier, our American Indian students were identified as being below the state average, and so we are getting quite a bit of support from the state. The piece with that is, it's really for all of our kids, because there are common strategies that the majority of our kids will be able to benefit from. And so like today, we met with them again, and they're bringing a lot to the table. So I am excited to see where that goes. We are also in year two of the FastBridge screener that we are required to give. And this year, as you probably recall, we also had to start giving the CAPD literacy screening for grades four and five. We did opt to give that to all students, even though we didn't have to. And I'm really glad that we did. A lot of really interesting data has been coming out from that, because we're used to getting star. You probably remember when your kids went through, you got a grade equivalent. You got to see what your percentile rank is. And we're finding in many instances, there are some variables. And the CAPD, especially for our fourth and fifth graders, is diving deep into things that are much more specific with phonics and reading. So together, they've been a great pair. We've had a couple of instances already where we utilize both sets of data. Also with the hiring of Mrs. Schneider, so she obviously is a full-time staff member. Point six of her day is interventionist for title, and then point four is the literacy lead. And her duties, I listed a few. These are just a few of the many things she's been doing. But she maintains very specific data folders on all of our students. It basically tracks all of their information from year to year. We use that for title selection. We also use it for our MTSS process, which, once we really get that going, I will bring a sample of what that looks like, so you can see that. Even our special ed staff will go to Mrs. Schneider to pull very specific data out of those data folders that they can use in their emails and IEP meetings. She's also doing at least quarterly data meetings, and in many instances, it's more than that. She's assisting with planning interventions, so that would be to help students that earn at grade level. Assisting with planning and modeling literacy lessons. She attends all regional literacy meetings, which there are many. And so she is attending those, keeping us updated on the REDACT and some of the new strategies out. We are also lucky to have her doing our letters training for new staff. So right now, she, our BURBANY group is in year two of two. So like new teachers that we hired in '24, '25, completed a full year of training with her last year, and they're getting that second year now. We also, Mrs. Schneider is headed up with doing all the required literacy training for paraprofessionals. And we just had another session on Friday, the pairs came in. And so we're doing four two-hour sessions for them. In attendance, if they miss it, they do have to make it up, because that is actually by law. They have to get those eight hours in. And she's also serving as our MTSS facilitator for our newly adopted process. So lots of new things happening that we're excited about. So we have our first official MTSS meeting tomorrow onsite, so.
Next one has some, kind of a little time to brag about.
Yes.
The grade scores, I'll give it up.
I did look it up. The two-year contract for the ACT prep course was $3,500 a year. And it's a two-year contract.
So what Mr. Schneider has up there as a highlight is, and we celebrated this last year also, is that shows you the reading proficiency of our fifth graders last spring. So 69.4%, which is quite a bit over the state average. We would love to see all third and fourth grades close to that. And you'll see them the year prior, they were well above the last couple of years. So I just want to say thank you to the fifth-grade team and everyone that helped support those students up until that point. We're definitely seeing some positives by the time we get to fifth grade, so. Any questions? Or anything of mine? I guess we're not done, sorry. I thought we were at the last slide. Okay.
Leah?
This is more leaning into what we do for YMIC. So we have a collaborative that we work with. Can be Daxton Boyd, RCW, Ivanhoe does one small trip with us, Lakeview, and Miniota. And so we combine together, and we do all of these events. So I work with all the counselors, I meet with them monthly, and coordinate all these events with them, and make sure that we have high attendance from all the schools. So they're the same ones every year, but we continue to add, if I'm honest. So some new things that we always try to lean into to make sure is the major madness event. That's at SMSU. It's for EL, First Gen, and BIPOC students, so we make sure that students attend that one. So we'll be going this year for that one. We added the Courage Retreat back last year, so we've had a, after COVID, Youth Frontier let go a lot of their staff. And it was for a very long time, we could not get back in. So last year, we added our eighth-grade retreat back. So there's 350, 400 students in the gym. So we did it this year again. So we've had two years in a row with Youth Frontier doing an event. This is the strongest one that superintendents wanted to keep. So when we meet, they really liked this one to stay for us. And so, and they asked strongly for it to be in the fall, so as we kick off the year. So we did that one this year. A new one for us was Mankato, so also very hard to get in for a group visit. Would sound strange, but it is. So we took our juniors this year. So I asked all the seniors, I pulled them, and they said they've all made decisions, and they're ready, and they don't, we're not interested in going this fall. So I took all the juniors on Halloween, so about 29 of them. So that was a good trip. We'll be going next week with our ninth graders to an event where we have a speaker. It's a breakthrough retreat, and then all of us come together, and then we do a lunch together. So those are some of the main ones. As always, we do our junior college trip. We always add a senior college visit. SDSC and Lake Area were hard to get into last year, so we added it to make sure the seniors sit us out. Yeah, any questions on any of these events? I think we're at about 15 events in a year. We keep going up. The next slide is just making sure that we remember as we're going into our three goals what the goal around achievement integration is. And so it's always about reducing disparities and reducing disparities in equitable access to effective and more diverse staff and around academic achievement, and then increasing racial and economic integration. So as we kind of go into that, I have some sub-goals here. So as we talked earlier, this is our junior goal. You can kind of see the trends and where we're at. So we're at 96%. Those were our projected goals that we continue to go over, so. On the next slide, as we kind of changed our direction on this. We used to have it more around Intro to Education, so having more students from our area taking Intro to Ed. And we used to do that through MRVCTEC, and that was an in-person class, but our enrollment just went down. And so we really wanted to say, let's look in-house and train our staff in-house so that we might not be getting more teachers from our students. We have about two a year that go into education, so I'm not saying we don't, but not as many as we can get into the college class that we used to do. It's still there, but they just do it online, not as a group. So we're just looking at training our staff. So we're always partnering with our administration and our Indian Education Department to make sure that we're training our staff to become more effective educators. And we continue to meet this goal, so we're always at 100% as we do the staff training. This next one, okay, so we, our third goal is around the percentage of students in Native American Hispanic students group will increase their consistent attendance rate. So we gathered a lot of input, and I talked about this last year, from the PAC committee. And they really wanted us to focus on attendance. And so we tried an initiative around adding a staff member to do interventions around attendance. And we can evaluate it when it's over, but we got a baseline last year. So you can kind of see on the slides our baseline. And I pulled it both from unexcused and excused absences. And we do have a staff member that's doing a lot of interventions specifically for the Hispanic communities. You can kind of see it moving. We did have a staff there, and then it's not specifically in this role anymore. But if you look at our unexcused absences, which isn't on here, but it was at the bottom of the slide, our unexcused for Hispanic is 2.05%, and our unexcused for Native American is 2.8%. So it's really kind of there to make sure that students that get the support and there's more interventions around us, that staff. So we can continue to check in on this one and improve on it. Any questions at all? Want to do an integration?
It's great to roll those events.
Yeah, it is.
It's great to hear about all the different things that are happening across multiple grade levels. Thank you.
It's a lot of work for her, but I do think we get colleges and industries' attention by working together where employees try to reach out on their own. It just would not be very effective, so we do gain from it. Then last information there is just some basic information that I provide to you every year. We do get this data, it's available on the Minnesota Report Card. You can see that if you ever hop on there. I encourage you, I guess I can get lost in it pretty easy. I think it's pretty interesting information. But one thing to think about, my last statement there, is remember kiddos that do not take the test are considered not meeting the standards. That's, it's not a local decision, that's a state decision, okay? This report will be submitted on our website, and then I also have to submit it to MDE in two different forms. One is this report itself, and then one I have to fill out as word document, so. All right?
Any questions? Anybody about the report? There's a lot of information and a lot of time, so I appreciate everybody's effort. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to, we're halfway. Move on to new business. Personnel items, we had no resignations. Keep that trend going. We do have some new hires. The approval of employment for long-term substitute teachers, Cindy Lavin. Approval of employment for volunteer dance coach Carrie Gibson, volunteer dance coach Jocelyn Ballman, and volunteer dance coach Eva Welkin.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Ron's got a second, or? Motion is second. Any further discussion? Here are none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes no? All right, carries. Next is the approval of an overload assignment for the first semester for Jesse Nelson.
Okay, he is picking up a date for us, and he doesn't have a period in his day. We will have that rectified in the second semester, but the schedule was already put out. So by our negotiated agreement, he will get paid proportionally at the BA step one rate.
All right. Is there a motion to approve overload assignment?
I'll make that motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second by example.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes no? Next is to approve the paid family leave procedures.
Okay, these are procedures, not a policy, meaning that it allows us the greatest flexibility to make changes as changes come down the pipe. So we know this has to be implemented by January 1st. We have to inform all of our employees by December 1st. So Tara Denise and I have some work to get done before December 1st. This is our plan for our procedures and how to handle them. It is very time-consuming, but legally, we have to assure that each employee is informed and keep track of that. So we started working on a system on how to collect that from each employee. Anybody that gets a W-2, think about that. Substitutes, coaches, all of that. You folks will get that, and so unless you like, you know, I'm already bald, can't lose any more hair, but unless you want to exact some sort of revenge on me, please just sign it and get it back.
All right, any questions about this policy?
Procedure.
For a procedure, I'm sorry, it's procedure.
We did the rolling 12-month, yeah.
What's that?
I was just making sure we did the rolling 12-month time period for it.
Yeah. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by example.
Motion is your second?
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion on the policy?
Procedure.
Procedure. Procedure, thank you. I'm stuck on the policy. All right. All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes no? Policy updates, we have none tonight. Discussion items, we have none. Correspondence, we have none, I know. And upcoming events, the policy committee is meeting on November 12. Early dismissal for staff development on November 14. Finance committee meeting is November 19. Another early dismissal on November 26. And then no school for the Thanksgiving break from November 27 to 28. Building and Grounds Committee meeting on December 3. And early dismissal and staff development on December 5. And then meet for if necessary in Miami on December 8. And next quarter, we have December. And this is the meeting adjourned.